Good evening and welcome to the May twenty second.
May twenty second.
Apologize. May twenty second, twenty twenty four Ashland School Committee meeting. As is typical after the elections, we have to do a reorganization meeting. So I called the meeting to order and first and foremost, we need to look at having a chair and a vice chair. And then we'll go through the agenda topics as listed today. So, sorry, I've got someone here waiting to come in, apologize. So can I have a nomination for Chair of the Ashland School Committee?
I will nominate Ms. Lori Tosti to serve for a record-setting, whatever it's been, eleven years.
Do I have a second?
As our Chair.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Do you want it Lori? Are you okay taking it?
I'd be honored to do it again. Thank you.
So seeing none, can we get a, do we need to do a roll call here, Mark?
No.
No, just a vote on Ms. Tosti as the Chair, please.
Yes.
Four zero. So Ms. Tosti, you can.
Did you vote?
Three zero.
Can I abstain?
With one abstention. Okay. Would you like to take over then?
Sure.
We still need a vice chair.
Next up, we are going for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Mark if he's open to the position again.
Do we have a second for that? Yeah.
Second.
Discussion, are you willing?
I'm willing.
Anybody have anything to say? Just thank you for all you've done for so many years. Appreciate working with you. Awesome. So, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm voting for myself, aye.
All right.
I'm standing.
And then Secretary, the fun job.
Unless you want to my seat.
Does anybody want to volunteer?
You can have it, that's not.
Oh, let's all have it.
Relinquish the seat?
I know.
Do you want like six thousand page minutes?
Right, I nominate Tina.
Tina, are you up for that?
I am, that's right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everyone?
Aye.
Four zero, thank you. All right, same old, same old, everybody.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Thank you. Okay, getting back to the order of business this evening, we're starting with our call to order. Agenda review and adoption, there will be time for. Oh, I didn't read our vision statement. I'm messing up on my first night of my new job. We start every meeting by reading our vision statement, which is, "The Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and social emotional skills to pursue their chosen path, and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV." After time for public comment, the administrative items on the agenda this evening. We've already done the reorganization of the school committee. There's a field trip proposal, New York City, November ninth and tenth, twenty twenty four. A field trip proposal, Costa Rica, April eighteenth through twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. The Warren School Improvement Plan update. We will not be having the counseling update this evening. The World Language Update, Ashland Middle School and Ashland High School Program Review. Sixth Grade World Cultures Curriculum. AHS Handbook Recommendations. AHS School Improvement Plan Update. School Committee Summer Retreat. Superintendent's Evaluation. Assistant Superintendent's Update, Superintendent's Update, Warren Approvals. I'm not sure if we'll have Warren approvals tonight, probably not. Gifts and Donations, Minutes from April twenty four, twenty twenty four. Committee Reports of Activities, Member Updates, Action Items, and then we will adjourn. Is everybody okay with the order of business this evening?
Yes.
Excellent. So then we will move on to public comment. Anybody here for comment? Ms. Cece Duzette? Got three minutes?
Yes. What prompted me to come visit with you today is there's been a breaking news story about telecom companies coming in and offering financial incentives to put cell towers on schools. And I just want to be sure that Ashland Public Schools is aware of the risks. There are severe fall risks, fire risks. And as you're familiar with the biological effects of wireless radiation. So just wanted to put that out there for you. If the industry comes in and says, hey, we'll give you a thousand dollars to put a cell tower on the schools. Please be very wary of that. At an earlier planning board meeting, Lisa Mead, who is our Town Council, indicated she is not a telecom expert. And you really need to have a good land use attorney to look at anything that the telecom industry would put forward. What we're finding out in contracts that were drawn up in unknowing schools is that they roped them into contracts that start out for a few years. But then the language, if you don't know to look at it carefully, and I'm grateful we have three attorneys on our school board.
No telecom attorneys, but.
But they're doing some pretty tricky things.
You don't want me on that job.
That would lead you bound into these contracts for like thirty-five years. So I, that's what brought me in here today. But earlier, when we did the open house at our beautiful new Mendez School, I took a radio frequency radiation detection meter into the building with me. But first I measured out in the parking lot, and it was a beautiful green because we have not allowed cell towers on our schools. When I got into the schools, though, it was very high and very dangerous because we unwittingly put wireless access points in the ceiling of every single classroom. That's a nonstop microwave radiation transmitter. And Lori, I want to give you a shout out. When we first visited this conversation back in twenty thirteen, I think, there was a gentleman up in Vermont by the name of Ray Peeler, who's a building biologist. And he specializes in the biological effects of electromagnetic radiation. You were the first school committee member in the eleven years at that time that he had been doing this that actually picked up the phone and asked good questions. So thank you for having a curious mind. And ultimately, Ashland became the first in the nation to even have a sign hanging in our classrooms with best practices for mobile devices. Can you confirm, are we still hanging this in all of our classrooms? I think that's what we put in the handbook.
We can't respond, this is public comment, so we're not going to be answering any questions, but, and I personally don't know.
Okay, kudos to Ashland because we became the first in the nation. And now it has been positioned as a national example with a nonprofit organization called Tech Safe Schools. So what I would like to do is to offer you this meter to go into our schools and see what you can see. Because I measured the gym, the cafeteria, I measured all over that building, and it was red hot wherever I went. The message is not no technology. And if you look at those ruckus access points that were put up, each one has two ethernet cables in it. You can just drop a wire to the center of the room, plug in devices there, turn off the radiation, and have perfectly safe technology. So I would like to work with the school committee to, one, measure the exposures in our schools. And, two, look at the incredible resources we have today. Because what the science is showing us is this. And I think you guys will be able to relate to the anxiety, the depression, the learning disabilities. Children who have nausea, headaches, nosebleeds. We know scientifically now that this microwave radiation pulsation is a huge contributing factor. And I know that our social and emotional issues are only growing in the children in our care today. So I would love to work with you proactively. Summertime is a great time, they're really easy.
Sorry, Cece, I'm gonna have to cut you off, just out of fairness to everybody else who's up there, who only has limited time. But certainly, we can't respond, but, and I can't answer any of your questions about your device, but certainly if you. But can we set up a meeting? I'm not going to answer that question right now. Okay. But certainly, well, somebody can be available to at least answer that question at a later date. Okay, thanks.
So I will leave you if this, I'll come back at the next meeting.
I do not want to be responsible for that. Take it. And if we decide that we want it, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I'm just want to make sure that you have it. If, after, and at the appropriate time that we have a chance to discuss it, if the committee, somebody wants to be the steward of that equipment, we'll reach out to you. But I don't personally want to be responsible for it right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Field Trip Proposal.
Any other?
Oh, sorry, anybody else here for public comment this evening? Thank you. I think maybe you should have been. Okay, Field Trip Proposal, New York City, November ninth through tenth, twenty twenty four.
Hello, my name is Mary Namath. I'm a teacher at the high school. And Mike Werster and I are partnering to present this proposal for New York City trip that would highlight history and music.
Awesome. And the dates are on the agenda, and how many students?
Yeah, so we, the motor coach can take up to fifty students. And so we think that kind of the sweet spot is forty to fifty students.
Is this similar to the trip that you've taken in the past, or is this a new?
So there was a trip that was proposed and approved, I think maybe two years ago. We couldn't get the numbers. So that trip didn't end up going.
Gotcha. Okay, anybody have any questions?
Who is the trip targeted towards? Are there certain classes that are invited to join? Is it open to anybody?
It is open to anybody. So grades nine through twelve. Certainly, Mike is going to be, you know, advertising it to his students and me to mine, but yeah, it's nine through twelve.
And so are you trying to pull, this sounds like a sort of somewhat interdisciplinary type of thing, right? History and music.
You bet.
So is it going to be trying to be pushed out through both the history department and the music department?
Certainly, into the entire school.
Okay.
And like, is there criteria for being accepted? Is it like first come, or is it if there are more students than you have room for on the bus?
Yeah, I think first come, first served, yeah.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I noticed that for, for a portion of this, part of what goes along with it is like a travel journal and, you know, kind of a critique of the play that you guys watch and whatnot. So obviously, some, you know, if this is open to all students, some, some students have supports in school when they're working on writing projects and things like that. So is there a plan if there are students who may need certain structure or support? Is there working through the assignment piece of that? How do you envision that being, what does, like, what does that look like to execute the assignment?
So Mike and I are going to offer a few X-Blocks leading up to the activity to kind of talk through expectations, what they're going to be seeing and doing. And then the travelogue, how that is going to run and how it should be structured. And like how to write a musical review. And I will, you know, I will lead the X-Blocks on music, prepping them on the musical, kind of introducing the musical numbers and the plot so they're familiar with the show, and then how to write that. And then after we come back, we will also offer X-Blocks, you know, writing workshops.
And I see Mr. Werster on the Zoom. Is there anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I, I mean, I wanted to be able to come here at least virtually and support Ms. Namath in this. This, this kind of came out of a series of conversations that we've had over the last year or so about certain locations that we could bring the kids to and double team in a cross-curriculum way. Very specifically to kind of address and circle back to some of the questions that you all had. I teach a modern issues elective that's really geared towards seniors, but it's open to all kids. And to pull some of that curriculum into the X-Block was one of the discussions that we've had. Because, and I, and I've mentioned this several times to Ms. Namath. There are just a number of students who are unaware about the magnitude of the attacks of September eleventh. And I can't understate how surprised I am on a regular basis when they come to me as juniors, and we hit that part of the curriculum at the end of the year, which we're about to do this year. And when they come to me as seniors, if they haven't had me, they, they are just not aware of what happened that day.
Because they weren't born yet.
Of course, of course.
But yes, of course.
Beyond that, though. I mean, it's about what we're telling our kids at home, what we're teaching our kids in the school. And, you know, they know that image of the plane about to hit the building, the second tower, actually. But they don't know what happens next. And many of the students believe that the Boston Marathon bombing is a numerical equivalent to nine eleven in New York City, Pennsylvania, and so forth. So it's, it, it really is, I think it's really important to be able to take a week of X-Blocks and kind of bring them through what happened that day. Which I do in my class, but this would be a very condensed version of that. So that when we go down on that Saturday, and they are there at the National September Eleventh Museum on hallowed ground, that they can appreciate what they're seeing. And they're not just simply seeing a waterfall, per se, that's part of the memorial as designed. But they are seeing something of significance. So we, we've, we've spent, I, I mean, Ms. Namath, you jump in. I feel like we've spent a lot of time actually going back and forth over this year and last year, actually. And even when we were in Italy, kind of talking about cross-curriculum stuff.
When I've been there, it's very. Powerful and impactful, and to see all the names carved in, and, yeah. You definitely can't escape an understanding of the magnitude when you're there.
I just wanted to ask a question about, and this is where all the volume went up. It's for a question that Paul Kendall always seems to ask, and appropriately so, which is around, sort of what are we doing, given the cost of the trip, to make it accessible to students and families that can't afford it on their own? And I'm just wondering what kind of conversations you've had around that and what the outreach would be to make sure students understand that regardless of their means, they should be at least coming forward and seeking support to be able to attend the trip.
You bet. So we have spoken with Jen Shields, and she has a fund that has a few thousand dollars and to help support students who want to go on school trips. So that is an option. Mike and I have also talked about looking at potentially doing some programming to fundraise, either doing like a, like a fall, like Halloween themed dance, or a Halloween themed five K fun run, where there, you know, where people can dress up and run to raise funds to provide some scholarships.
Thank you.
And I know when Ms. Shields has been here, she has said that like when the trip is introduced to the students, that there's some kind of information, if you feel like finances are an issue, please come to me for a private discussion, kind of thing.
You bet. And I think that we're also going to include if, if families who are able would like to contribute additional funds to support students who, to make it possible for other students to go on, that there'd be an opportunity to do so.
That's fantastic, and that's great.
May I speak a little bit to the music part of the, the field trip? So I believe Broadway, I love Broadway musicals. And there are some incredible shows that are going up in New York City with a lot of literature and history tie-ins as well. So Great Gatsby is one of the options. Like Water for Elephants, which takes place, was a really famous fiction book in the nineteen thirty circus. It's really incredible about the Depression. And the one that I'm really excited about is called Suff, it's about suffragettes. So there's a lot of really wonderful, rich shows. And there's also tremendous benefit to students going to performances and learning the etiquette of how to sit in an audience. At the high school, we don't have a, like, required, like, in-school performances for like the band or the choir, or for the plays or the musicals. And so there really isn't an opportunity, aside from assemblies. And assemblies are, you know, a horse of a different color. And so there is a real benefit to how do you behave in an audience? And we just came from, the choir and I, from a tour around Ashland, visiting all of our schools and kinder care and the residents at Valley Farm. And, you know, all the schools are, are learning and teaching while we are there, how, what is appropriate behavior? When do you clap? When do you not clap? And how to sit and enjoy? So, so that, I think, is really beneficial as well.
Sounds wonderful.
I'll make a motion to approve the Field Trip Proposal, New York City, on November ninth, tenth, twenty twenty four, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're going.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy the show.
Thanks. Okay, next up, we have another Field Trip Proposal, Costa Rica, April eighteenth to twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five.
Hi, I'm Tina Locke. I'm looking to bring back a program that the high school students who should, used to go to in Costa Rica. The dates have changed a little bit, so it's shorter, it's one day shorter. It starts on the nineteenth, which makes the price go down a little bit, like a hundred and forty dollars. But the students, it'd be a small group of students, like six to twelve. And it's based on interest, so if stu, whoever wants to go in the school, it's open to it. And then the students will go to research and take data on leatherback sea turtles. Then they're endangered, so they'll contribute to helping them in their habitats. But they'll do measurements, they'll relocate them if they need to. They'll also get the opportunity, weather permitting, I guess, to go on like night hikes in the rainforest with guides. And it's just an overall exciting science experiment, or adventure. And the teacher that went on this before just raves and raves about the experience that they all had while they were there. And that's why I'm like, let me see, I'll take it over here.
You know how long it's been since we ran this trip?
It's been a while.
I don't even remember.
I remember hearing about it, yeah.
No, I think, was I still principal? You, you had last, yeah, okay, so it's been at least eight, yeah.
Is there a group that, you know, facilitates the, the scientific experimentation?
Yes, it's the Ecology Project International. And they do offer like a small need-based scholarship. So if people need it, they can apply, and they do whatever paperwork they need. And I think it's only like up to about six hundred dollars of it. But they also offer like GoFundMe-type fundraising for every individual student can have this link or whatever. I'm not sure how it will play out. And then also, like, once I have a group and I know who's going, we can talk about fundraising ideas. Once the commitment is made.
And that same organization, they pretty much set the agenda for your day?
They do it all, yeah, they do the travel, they do all the.
And they're used to having student groups come in?
Yeah. And I think the woman who used to run it, she told me that like if they had a small group and there was another small group of school, they would just work together and they would get to meet other people from other schools in the country or wherever.
Awesome.
Am I correctly assuming the dates that are on the form overlap with our school vacation week for the most part?
Yes, yeah, it is all during the school vacation.
Is this targeted towards a certain class? Like, is, or it's just kind of open to?
Open.
Anybody who's interested? There's no necessary prerequisite of information or anything that.
AP Environmental Science.
Right, well, I was trying to think, you know, what, what classes would be? I'm sure obviously some kids who have targeted classes may, you know, have a greater interest. But it's good to know that it's open to anybody. And I noticed, you know, kind of some of the curriculum pieces that this touches on, I didn't notice, like with the last presentation, any specific assignment that goes along with it. So is it really just an experiential learning?
Yes.
That happens, yeah.
They did tell me that. They used to have a situation where students could get like college credit. They don't have it right now, but they're working on it for next year, twenty twenty five. So I don't know if that will.
So students may be able to do that.
So they may be able to, yeah. They get thirty hours coursework hours or something is what they kind of promise them as part of. Their experience.
I'll go back to high school.
I know, it also sounds.
Sounds very exciting.
Yeah. Who's got a motion, unless you have more questions?
Somebody else wanted to?
Yeah. I move to approve the high school field trip to Costa Rica. Oh, I lost the date, hold on, April.
Eighteen to twenty-sixth.
Now it's the nineteenth.
April nineteenth through the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty five, as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Look forward to hearing about it.
Yeah.
As someone who's been to the, to Costa Rica, when the turds were being laid, or the, the eggs. Yeah, it was, it's unbelievable.
Sounds really phenomenal.
Oh, my gosh, I've been there. Absolutely.
That's where I just was, yeah.
Yeah.
My daughter's gonna.
My daughter's gonna be like, I'm going. I just went for April vacation. Yeah. It's beautiful.
Unbelievable.
Bye. Good night. Thank you.
And safe. It's awesome.
All right. Hi, Pete. Warren School Improvement Plan Update.
Hello. Thank you for having me. And Lori, this will be a review for you as you heard it at site council.
Excellent.
I'm very excited just with the progress that our schools have been making towards the goals that we set. It's still a journey, you know, where this is a three-year plan, but we, we've got a great stack. We're further ahead than I anticipated when we began the year. We started our partnership, as you know, with S three through DESI, the Strategic Student Support System. And they've worked with us. We've now created whole child reviews. So we have completed one this year with a small group of staff that's part of our training team. We'll be doing another one next week without the support of S three. So they were with us for the first round of this. Our school's a little different in what we've been doing with the S three group. And at the beginning, it was a little frustrating because when we were part of the whole group sessions with the state and other communities, we would be at breakout sessions and we would hear staff members from other schools saying, I don't even know why I'm here right now. And our staff was getting very frustrated by that because ours were dedicated professionals to making a difference for our students. S three made some great adjustments and they started grouping us together and really just letting us work together with the support from their leadership team. They also visited our data team meetings and observed our data team meetings and just saw how these two pieces overlap each other in great ways, but that they shouldn't occur at the same time in their opinions that the whole meeting, whole child review should happen twice a year. But then our data reviews at five times a year where they, they felt that we should actually present to other groups at the state level because of what we're accomplishing. So with our progress towards that, we're, we're doing really well with our whole child reviews. The team will expand next year based on recommendations from S three. It will still not be a whole school initiative until year three. And the goal really tailors back to a goal of gyms, which is that every child has an individualized learning plan. And our teachers are doing that right now for reading, for mathematics and their social emotional pathway. Next year, we're going to be increasing that to be writing as well. So we're moving towards those pieces of what our district goals are. As some other pieces that are still under the, the, the heading of the equity pieces is we've also continued to be recognized as a unified school champion with our Special Olympics pieces. And that's just exciting of what we're able to do for all of our students and the partnerships that we've grown there. As we've continued as well with social emotional learning, as I mentioned a moment ago in our data team meetings, Jen Taylor is working with us as well. So she's supporting the counselors, but competing with the teachers to create those individualized plans of where students need some additional small group work or tweaking some lessons for classes based on data that we're finding. The class, staff, we have eight staff members who are being trained over the next two weeks with responsive classrooms who our commitment that we made years ago, that all teachers would be trained in responsive classroom has continued. Our new hires, we will have three new first grade teachers next year. They are already scheduled and signed up to be taking the course at the end of July. So we will have all of our teachers again will be trained and certified with responsive classroom. Our community service projects, that's our one that I don't have a great update to give yet. Our SEL team is working hard to really develop about what are going to be those pieces that our students will be doing this year as well. Our staff has done quite a bit of where they've jumped forward into future years and I've tried to bring them back to the here and now still and say, what are we doing for these pieces? With some adjustments that we're going to be making with some just weekly tasks that classrooms will be responsible for of different areas of the playground and how we're going to be really cleaning. Because if you've driven by the school anytime in the last few years, you'll see that at night, there's probably on any given day, five basketballs, three soccer balls, fourteen jackets, different things lined up up there. And that's part of the plan of where we've been talking with the students about how each day, different classes are going to take time to really take the care for that area that, that's needed. But we are not in a place yet where I have the specifics of what will be the occurrences of this year. We've got quite a few ideas and they're just narrowing them down on that team. On resource management, our drills have continued under Mike's direction with the District Safety Committee, working very closely with the Ashland Police Department and National Fire Department. We've continued to make great strides. We continue to throw different wrinkles into our drills as our staff has realized that they need to make decisions at the moment to keep the children and themselves safe. And we'll continue with another drill coming up in the next week or so. ST Bath has been a great success this year as well. ST Bath set a lofty goal for all of the schools. So when we went to the training back in August, they told us that the goal needed to be that eighty percent of our students have made the progress through the journey that it's called, these math puzzles. And they did tell us about how many districts are dropped each year because they haven't met that lofty goal. We did have until the end of the year to reach this goal and as of last Friday, the goal being eighty percent, eighty seven point nine percent of our journeys were already completed and we still have the remaining part of the year. Really credit there goes to our teachers. Our teachers have bought in and they understand the importance of what we're doing with this. And I credit that to, the teachers are the one that brought this to me. And they asked, they said, we need something different to help our children. Here are the benefits of this. We want to visit some other communities and look at this. So when it came time to share, here's our plan of how we'll implement this, everyone was on board immediately. And that's why we've had the buy-in and we've had the great success.
Can you just say quickly what Journey says?
So the journey is part of the ST Bath piece. So there's a Penguin Day.
Right, right.
So there's a Penguin Day of Gigi. Gigi needs to go on this journey through their math lessons of, of the course of a year. And what they're doing is they're getting exposed to all the content of that grade level. And there's actually differentiation that happens as well of where they can get onto some higher pieces as well. I also have the ability that we can change grade levels for some students. So if they need to come backwards a little or go forward a little, we have that piece. Teachers can assign individual puzzles to their children as well. So that journey is that they're really trying to move the Penguin through, through this large map of puzzle after puzzle after puzzle.
The kids love it.
They are, they are really excited. Last Friday, as a celebration for reaching our goal, we had Penguin Day. It was just a fun day at our school where the kids were very excited.
Did you dress up?
I had my white, my tuxedo T-shirt on.
There you go.
So we will be continuing to push forward in these goals as there's still progress to make for every area that I spoke about, from S three with the whole child reviews that as I mentioned, the team will be getting larger next year by expanding our data team meetings. Another major component of our data team meetings is how we're sharing the information of what was accomplished this year with the next year's teachers. So we're not starting over. The community service pieces, and as I said, the teachers are excited about the future, just keeping them in the here and now. Responsive classroom will continue for all of our staff. And then as well with Journey, this is a three-year grant that we are connected with as long as we continue to meet the qualifications, which I have no doubt that we will.
Thanks, Pete.
Any other questions? Good stuff.
Sounds like a lot of good, good progress. Thanks, Pete.
Okay. World Language Update, Ashland Middle School and Ashland High School Program Review.
So I, I'm gonna just do a quick introduction with this. I think, I think the school committee knows that over the course of at least my ten years as superintendent and even going back to principal of the high school, we've had conversation about the world language department and what it looks like in the Ashland Public Schools. And, and we've really worked hard at trying to drive the two languages that we currently offer, French and Spanish. And building programs is important. And, and I want to be really clear that the Ashland Public Schools is not a system that believes in one language to be offered. We don't know what the rest of it looks like in terms of where we're headed from a curriculum standpoint. But in the middle school, we made some adjustments and Dave can talk to this a little bit. Two years ago, coming out of COVID, where some of our students were missing part of the year in French and part of the year in Spanish. And we, we, we thought, how can we drive the, the language department at the middle school to help add numbers at the high school in both languages, right? French and Spanish. And so we're doing exploratory, half year French, half year Spanish. Then they would do the same in, in the seventh grade and the eighth grade, they would choose which language they're going to focus on at the eighth grade level, which eventually leads into the high school, right? So we're a couple of years in and we're looking at the numbers and it's still not great in terms of the French numbers. And as we look at programming, I think it's important to understand that it's not just a national phenomenon, right? I was just in Vermont over the weekend. My two best friends are French teachers. And they are actually both teaching Spanish next year. And they're only French speakers, like in Vermont, where you would think French were near the Canadian border. Those numbers are dropping significantly there as well. It's a challenge. So what I wanted Dave and Kelly to do was to present to you the data that we see happening in terms of enrollment. What are students choosing for next year? How does, what does it look like? And then the second component to this is, and Dave will speak to this afterwards, what are we going to do for next year, right? How can we approach world language, but also culture and exposing our students to diverse cultures? And we'll get into that in a moment, but I think it's important to have Dave and Kelly talk about the numbers themselves. Because the data drives the decision we make, decisions we make with regard to teachers and programming that we offer. So, Dave, do you want to start and I'll pull your slide deck up? Put my glasses on so I can see it. I think each of you should have this. Paul Kendall's not here yelling at me. This is what you do. Now, I have it up.
So Jim had explained, you know, what the program looks like this year. And, and the graphic shows you in terms of staffing, right now, three Spanish teachers and two French teachers. So you're right now, you're sixth and seventh grade are exploratory, French, half Spanish. This was something that we've done for the past two years to try to reinvigorate, to see if we can boost numbers and invigorate the program. So that was for the past two years. And for this year, and then we polled our seventh grade students to say, you're going to choose your language now for next year. So these are students who've had essentially a year's worth of exposure to all languages, right? So after doing those numbers out in terms of eight selections, your French selection in the eighth grade was twenty eight. And your eighth grade was one hundred and sixty nine. So that is a decrease even from what we were seeing. So we didn't see an increase. We, we, we saw a decrease in language. So that's presenting challenges for the staffing we have and being able to, be able to run the program like we want to be able to run the program, right? So with the next slide.
Oh, sorry, Dave.
Yep. So based on, so based on the, the request numbers, we were looking at just the number of classes we would need running those classes, right? So for your seventh grade French, and I have the request numbers up there as well, so we polled sixth grade students, thirty-three students selecting French, one hundred and sixty, pretty similar ratio. In fact, it's a little smaller because going back three to four years ago, the class sizes were a little smaller too, right? So actually, it's, it's, it's not as strong. And for eighth grade, you were looking at fifteen students, which would be one class, of course, one hundred and fifty-five for seven to eight classes. That's based on what are the numbers in the other grades and where do we need to utilize staffing? So.
Dave, can I just ask, excuse me?
Sure. Yeah.
When you're, when you're doing these surveys or whatever they are, are you asking the kids directly or are the parents involved in that at all?
So I just let parents know that the students are going to be selecting it.
Yeah.
And they, they do select it in their world language classes with their world language teacher.
Okay.
Whomever it is, right? So it's not, it's not about the teacher you're, it's who you're with at that time, right? So in the exploratory in sixth and seventh grade, you're, right, you're splitting into different teachers.
Right.
We did the poll not, not a month ago, so relatively recently. So whoever students have right now, right, for the second semester, they did that in that course.
Got you. I was only asking because I know in that age group, sometimes, you know, what the kid wants and what the parent wants might be different. But, but, but still, if the interest is that low, then hopefully.
We need parents aware because it's the same thing. If you just pulled parents, you might not.
Exactly.
You know, representation because ultimately they have to take the class. And they encourage students when they present it, speak to your parents regarding your choice, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Discussion because we want the numbers to be accurate. It can be challenging in middle school, but we let the parents know as well and we're hoping they have those conversations.
Yeah, it sounds like the right approach.
So is this a poll or enrolled, like what kids have enrolled in or said?
Running the program, which would you select to choose? This is what you would be enrolled in for the fall of two thousand.
Okay. So it's not a commitment though, it's a poll. I mean.
We, we polled it, but we'll send another email saying, you know, we're scheduling according to these numbers.
Yeah. So, so Mark, to your point, it's not a commitment yet because we're going to be asking specific things of the school committee tonight with regard to changing curriculum.
Right.
Right? I mean, if, if, if you're not on board, if the committee's not on board with the direction that we're looking to go, then these numbers could significantly change. And we're just pushing kids into programs that may not.
Be what they're interested in. Right. I mean, regardless of who was polled, these numbers are pretty striking.
Well, well, it is consistent with what we've seen over the course of ten years.
Right. We've been talking about it and especially Marcy, you know, new and I don't know how much of the time you've been involved, Tina, in these discussions, but they've been going on for years, usually at the summer retreat where we talk about, you know, stuff like this. So, but it's time to, to make some changes.
It is. And the numbers are really dictating that you can't.
They're moving in, in the other direction.
They're moving in the other direction. And we tried, as we said, to do everything we felt we could to reinvigorate. It just, the results weren't there.
Yeah.
It just didn't happen. So, so in terms of our, our needs now, we don't have the need for two French teachers because we don't have the numbers to create those classes. As I said, those you force students to take a certain language. So the need for, for us this year was a four Spanish teachers and one French teacher, based on the numbers I just showed you. So if you look up at French, so you would have two French seventh grade classes and you would have one French eighth grade classroom, right? Cause you had thirty-three roughly. So you're looking at two classes, a sixteen, seventeen and a class of fifteen for your eighth grade. In Spanish, you're in all probability looking at eight eighth grade classes. Again, depending on the size of the sixth grade class, but that extra, that French teacher now goes to teaching all those Spanish classes. So it, it does work.
It's a type of seventh, yeah. Seventh and eighth.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah. So, yeah, I'm sorry. The first should say seventh. I apologize. So for sixth grade, what I would also need is instead of teaching the exploratory now, again, because you don't have that French interest and you need the Spanish teacher, just having conversations about, instead of offering a course that teaches a basic introductory to the language, introduction to the language, to teach a course more that focuses on cultural responsiveness. The customs, the traditions, you know, aligning with sort of our DEI initiatives and giving students more of those experiences. Encouraging them, having them understanding to appreciate other people's differences and other cultures. So which, which is needed, especially now. So it's an opportunity for us to shift from a introduction to French and Spanish to our sixth grade students taking instead, call it a world cultures class where they would be exposed to a range of cultures, traditions and, and be able to stress that. And we even talk with our teachers about, in sixth grade, talk about what it means to learn a language the following year. What skills you're looking to develop? What does it mean? So I think there's a lot of opportunities to also sort of set the stage for that seventh grade year where we'll be choosing, essentially choosing their language for this model, right? So after that world cultures class, they would choose their language or following year, looking at the program. So that's what we're asking, the change that I, I think we would like to make. So primarily is our sixth grade class going from a exploratory introduction to a world cultures model for us.
And we'll come back to that.
I was just gonna ask, do you have any like frameworks?
Yeah, well, Mike will talk about that. That's the next agenda item. I just want to give you the numbers first.
I was gonna ask, can I just ask some numbers question? So I'm just, are there any kids, and I don't know if this would change proportions at all, but are there any kids that are not currently taking one, an exploratory, right? I mean, that, that for whatever, they don't take foreign, a world, world language and aren't reflected in these numbers or might have made a choice without having had the opportunity to participate in the exploratory program?
So we looked at those numbers as well. So to, to answer your question, there are some students, right, who are getting other services. So they wouldn't be factored into that number. So that if those students were then going to be in world language, we reached out to those students to figure out what their selection would be. So you're, you're taking those students into account, but to your point, it's not a hundred percent students because of students within their schedule or needs. They're getting certain services that.
Any difference in sort of the proportion of French versus Spanish from the kids who haven't taken, had any exposure at all or is it pretty much the same thing?
It's pretty similar. Unfortunately, you know, that it's reflecting the same thing. We're just having a lower ratio or number of students who are interested in day language.
So in terms of, you know, the students who aren't taking a foreign language because they're receiving services or whatnot. So in terms of, you know, the students who aren't taking a foreign language because they're receiving services or whatnot during that block of the day, I'm assuming that that means that in sixth grade, they'll miss out on this world cultures course. Is, is, is that how the schedule will still work and what does that mean, like, yeah?
Correct, so how the schedule runs now, then yes, that's what.
Yeah, great question.
That's what it would mean, yeah, and that, so those are the parts where the way the schedule works now, then yes, that's what it would mean. The same as it does now where if they're getting services, they're missing that exploratory in sixth grade, so it's in that same block, so yeah, you're right with that.
So let me chime in there, because this is actually a great conversation that the three of us had on Monday, is how, how do we actually create an opportunity for these students to be exposed, right, to the world cultures class? Because we, we, we do think it's critically important that all kids, right? And whether you're getting services outside and you're not required to take a world language, et cetera. This is part of the reason why, as we move forward with whatever schedule we have for next year, that we're really reevaluating the schedule we have at the middle school. So in future years, all students have an opportunity to experience the totality of the curriculum. But, but that being said, yeah, I mean, it, it's the way the schedule's set up. Students who are, you know, typically receiving services don't have the ability to be taking world language. They're just pulled for other reasons at that time.
So you're saying that the schedule would, would be potentially different next year, or it'd be.
No, in twenty-five, twenty-six, Mark, yeah. Yeah, we don't have the ability to change it right now, yeah. This is, so the way we're working with the schedule based on the numbers is we have to make modifications to the current schedule with teaching staff, and to be able to provide a course where students can go, we can't just have sixth graders going nowhere. So we wanna make sure we create a course where, within Dave's wheel, if you, you know, if you will, or that it's there for those students. So instead of taking a half-year French, half-year Spanish, in sixth grade, there's another option. And that option could be world cultures, drama, whatever else that we add into the system.
Right, and it seems like this is the beginning of like a longer-term conversation because
Yeah.
if French is not sustainable as an offering, which it looks like it could be headed in that direction, then there has to be another iteration of this anyway.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
If this program changed, you know, and the schedule changes, because this isn't sustainable either, right?
Right.
Those numbers are going that direction because then you're starting predicated on the numbers each, it's, it just.
Right. It's just not good for anybody, even the person who's teaching French, it's, it's a, not a stable situation.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so who's teaching the world cultures class? Is this gonna take the place of this?
World language teachers.
The, so like, let's say the French teacher, because there aren't as many students teach, so that this would go into their rotation of courses.
And Spanish teachers as well.
Yep, oh, yep.
If the, and this might not be the right time for this question, but if they're not getting the half-year intro in sixth grade, does that put them behind of where you expect them to progress when they get to high school?
No. So be, pre, you know, pre-COVID, it was, you know, seventh grade exploratory, going into eighth grade you choose.
Okay.
Or sixth grade exploratory, and you choose two years, and you get it in the seventh and eighth grade. The bottom line is, in many, most districts, if not all, eighth grade world language should be the equivalent of whatever the first iteration of
freshman year, whatever, French one.
freshman year at the high school.
Yeah.
Spanish one, French one, that's what it needs to be.
Okay.
So we've gotta change, that's a great question, because we have to actually change our instructional model to ensure that the students who are in the eighth grade are actually ready and competent to move into whatever that, Spanish two, Portuguese two, whatever it might be, right? Whatever we decide on and move forward with in a year. That's the equivalent of, eighth grade should be equivalent of one year of whatever language it is. Shouldn't be predicated upon seventh grade, right now, we've got seventh and eighth grade trying to get a year's worth of instruction in. It actually should just be the eighth grade.
Okay, okay.
And my recollection too, when my kids were at the middle school, was even when they had those half-years, it wasn't purely language instruction. There was a lot of culture in, it, it was, there was a part of that half-year curriculum, it wasn't purely foreign language instruction. And so it sounds like this is gonna broaden that, that look at culture, right, which is a great thing, but also it, it's not brand new. Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, Mike will talk a little bit about that.
Yeah.
And when we get to the request.
Yeah, it just looks different, right?
Yep. Okay. Questions for Dave, so we move into Kelly, like I wanna, because it really.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all one thing.
It's all one, correct.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
Hi, Kelly.
Long time no see.
How'd you have a site council tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, let me see. This is this.
So similar to middle school, we've been doing some work to really try and build the program back up, in particular with French. This is the, these are numbers from this year. This is the first year in a while that we've been able to offer a French one. We put certain classes in our course every year, and typically we're telling the liaisons that if we don't have at least ten students, we can't run, because of the impact on other students. So we were able to offer a French one this year, and, you know, the hope that was going to be started, maybe some rebuilding. And when you look at the other sections with French, we have for a couple of years now, been writing that differently than we do for a lot of our other classes for high school, and other classes are combined in terms of leveling, C P and honors together. And, you know, so all of our classes, with the exception of our French three this year, were combined to C P honors. I'm sorry, we had two sections of those, but they were all combined to C P, exceptionally four was honors. And we only have five students, like five A P dress. So this year, we have four point eight Spanish teachers and one point two French teachers. I'm not gonna speak to the Spanish numbers, you can see them.
There are a lot.
So when we shared our requests with our liaisons, when we finished that process back in the beginning of April, we saw that clearly we were not going to be able to offer French ones coming here, really had two students coming out of the middle school interested in taking it. And three students that are younger than the juniors. We have some kids that are taking introductory, introductory language classes that maybe have met their requirement in the other language, and decide, okay, I'll try it, so what else, you know, the other language is empty, so that's where those numbers come from. And you can see the other numbers remained relatively low in terms of our ability to hold sections. Clearly, A P this year, a French five, we have one student that elected A P French.
Kelly, on these charts, you, you're showing C P slash H, right, so that the students college prep to, or honors can be combined. Is that, maybe this is on the next slide, but is that, do you have to do the same thing with Spanish classes?
You do not, it's separate out. So that's definitely an impact on the students in the course, and how the teachers teach the course. There's a different level of asset portions for the students that are earning honors credit within those French courses. Definitely easier for the teachers to break it out.
So it, I mean, I think on your two slides, they do show the same way. So maybe I made, made an assumption on the French one that wasn't right. You know, it shows like, for example, French two, C P slash H twenty-nine, and has the breakdown. It shows the same way in the Spanish, right, C P slash H, and then. But the classes you say are separated out.
The classes are not counted, right, right.
So when the kids come out of eighth grade and they've taken the language, I know that the expectation is they're supposed to be ready for French two or Spanish two, but is, does that automatically happen, or is there some kind of test to make sure that they shouldn't do French one versus French two?
We are not, we do not test.
We just automatically put everybody in two?
No, no.
Okay.
I think the teachers make recommendations based on what our program of studies says that, you know, we want.
They should be ready for, yeah. Yeah.
I think, you know, want them to have a certain proficiency. So there are, there are students every year that the middle school teachers might say, I don't think are quite ready for.
They're going into one.
Spanish two, and we'll go to one.
So if you can't offer a one then, and so that, what is that?
They go to Spanish one.
They go to Spanish.
They go to Spanish one, okay.
Even if they were interested in French, they go to Spanish.
Okay.
Whenever yours, which have been most years that we can offer a French one.
Got you, okay, thank you. Which is like they're starting over anyway.
Right.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Right.
So when looking at our numbers, we realized that we needed to take our one point two down to a point six, maybe a point eight teaching position for next year. Obviously, that means our Spanish numbers rose, and, you know, looking at the sections that we need, we're looking at maybe a five point four Spanish teacher. We are very lucky in the fact that we have a teacher that can teach both languages. So one te, the teacher that we already have will now be teaching more, partly, she started to teach Spanish. Next year, she will teach more French sections than Spanish, she's the person that's our point two in French this year. So, you know, we're looking at, these are the section numbers that we are anticipating we're gonna need for next year. And you'll see the numbers on the next slide with the French two, and I can speak a little bit, we go to that one.
I don't have, it's the last one.
Yeah.
You don't have it?
That's it, Kelly, I don't have another, it's the last slide.
Go back maybe to the French?
There you go.
Okay.
Yep.
So right now, French two, the C P and honors is twenty-nine students, which is a big, we have it as one section, which is a big number, especially, especially for an introductory, more introductory level class. We know from experience that, and anticipated for potential discussion happening, that we might have some of those students, say, kind of want to transition over to Spanish. But we know that some of these students are, you know, a couple of older students again that might transition, and so but if the number stays steady at twenty-nine, and we have just started running our schedule now, that we would anticipate splitting that into two sections, which is why we put a point six versus a point eight for the need. And then we have a Spanish section, I think it was a Spanish four, that was a little on the bigger side. So if we need to split, if the French stays as it is, then we could have two sections of the Spanish, otherwise we might have a little bit of a bigger, but I think one of our Spanish four sections is really not good. We also know from experience that the, both Spanish and French fours and fives, the numbers that we get through requests do tend to drop quite a bit once we start scheduling, because with the two-year requirement, students tend to, if they're making some choices around classes that they wanna take, and electives, if they wanna take, the languages often dropped. They wanna take two sciences or two maps or something like that. So that's where we're headed now. I think, you know, we, we spoke in the letter a little before of, you know, we hope to, to start the year having some discussions about what the student interested, surround languages that we might offer. We feel very strongly about not being a one-language school, the language department feels very strongly about that, I feel very strongly about it. And when we did our survey with students back in December of twenty-two, and we took it out about what new classes we were gonna bring in, when you approved the business teacher, you know, we asked about a general question about what other classes students wanted to see. And Portuguese and ASL, well, they have less than classes that students mentioned. So a big part of it is really looking at, you know, what, what kinds of teachers are out there, what kind of programs are in existence. We've started to have some of those around there in discussions.
Any other questions? No? Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
And then next up, the sixth grade world cultures curriculum, are we gonna hear more about that?
Yeah, so I'll have Mike speak to this, and Dave, if you wanna ask or answer some questions. But again, part of it is, as we look at the current schedule that exists at the middle school, we, we clearly have to have places for students to go. We know that the French language component isn't sustainable. And so what does that look like? We, we believe in making sure that our students are exposed to diverse cultures. And so we, we had a conversation between the three of us that what are the things that they're teaching in the sixth grade and seventh grade level, to be honest with you, that they could pull into a class for students and for exposure, right? For an appreciation of diverse cultures and the world cultures class, and Mike, go ahead, and Dave?
Yeah, and, and from a curriculum standpoint, I think what Tina pointed out makes this not seamless, but easier to do than to just introduce an entire new concept to our, to our students, right? We have the staff that can do it, and they have, to a certain extent, been incorporating world cultures of the nations in which people speak this language into their curriculum already. So what we will also do is we will use a portion of our summer curriculum funding to fund projects for our teachers to write some curriculum towards this. So we're going to obviously put, put money towards that and work with them to, to provide them the time that they need to be able to have solid plans to make sure that we're teaching our, our students what they need to learn. It, it's gonna be an introductory course, obviously. I think that, you know, we're, we're not going to be going so deep, but we're going to try to go as wide as we possibly can to really allow them to understand the different cultures of the world. And as Dave said earlier, this is a great opportunity for us to introduce some of the work that we've done with the E I as well, to really, you know, learn how to understand, appreciate the different cultures that are across the world, not just Spanish and French. You know, I, I, I didn't get a chance to talk to one of our teachers today, but I, I get approvals on a regular basis for teachers who are taking courses. Well, I found it very interesting today that one of our middle school Spanish teachers put in for four PGCA credit courses just today, all about learning cultures of different countries in South America. So she clearly had, has talked to Dave and sees the writing on the wall here, and she's taking the initiative to go and, and take this, this coursework. So it means to me that at least a portion of the population of teacher is jumping right in to, to understand that this is a need for us.
And I think what you also have to consider is that as we look at our numbers coming from the MINDET school, right? We, we recognize during the budget cycle that we've asked for another reading teacher at, you know, the middle school. And we've recognized that the fifth grade class coming up, there's, there's a significant portion of students who need some additional support. And those students wouldn't necessarily be, you know, again, part of the world cultures classes or language classes that currently exist in today's model. So those numbers again would be significantly smaller if, you know, if we ran the same schedule and structure that we have. So we just wanna be cognizant of that too, that we have areas where these students will be going and meeting the needs of the kids who are coming from fifth grade into sixth grade, so.
Just to, I think you said this before when you were talking, Dave, but the, so the model is this new sixth grade world cultures program, and then seventh grade, so kids, next year's sixth graders go through this, when they get into seventh grade, they would have the choice at that point of Spanish or French?
Going to the current model, but as we discussed earlier, I think it's something you need to look at, given those numbers, you have to be looking at the world language program, which means you're looking at the schedules, so I think those are things that need to be examined and will be determined by that. As how it's run this year, yes, but again, discussed earlier, those things are.
Right, in the longer term with these numbers, does that like continue to make sense? Or even like, and I don't wanna start any trouble here, this is just a question, but do all junior high, middle schools have language?
No.
I mean, I did, and that's why I'm asking. I, I did not have it, but I was a very good Spanish student in high school. So, and again, I'm not saying that I'm in favor of getting rid of it, but is it something that we have to have? If there, if we find that there's something else that we could put in there that might be more beneficial to the entire population there?
So the answer is no.
Yeah.
Not everyone does, and some districts just have one language at the eighth grade level. And so to, to Dave's point, this is a topic of conversation that needs to occur, starting in the summer, where a decision, a decision that is made
Right.
from a district lens, at least at the middle school level, by December. It's that, because it has budgetary impact.
Correct.
And it has impact for students who are currently in the system. I, I, I'm certainly, would never be in favor of denying students who are currently in a specific world language to not have the ability to continue forth in that language. So when we're looking at the high school, for instance, we have students who are maybe in French one, two, or three, who are underclassmen. We're fortunate, we do have an educator who is certified in both languages, so we can ensure that those students always have that option, right? And many districts have may, maybe four or five at the high school level, options to ask for classes. And then you determine if those courses are going to run, depending upon enrollment, or, or, you know. So, so at least at the middle school, we're keeping the same structure of the schedule next year.
For now.
But we're, what we're asking for the school committee approval is to move from the model of having teaching in the exploratory, French and Spanish, and it is a curriculum change, and it's. in the exploratory, French and Spanish, and it is a curriculum change and it's where it comes into your purview.
Right.
To a world cultures class for these students coming into sixth grade.
Right, so it's two parts. There's something that needs to happen now, which is that?
Right.
And this is the beginning of a longer-term conversation.
It's been, already been a long-term conversation, right?
Well, I mean, this is, it's a phase-out process, so if it is gonna be, if there's gonna be a shift in-
You don't use that term because of Mindset, okay?
And there's something phasing in and another one phasing out. It's not something that you said can just stop, right? We have kids who need to have the opportunity to finish what they started. But a couple of questions about where we are now. So in terms of the world cultures class, I, I, I'm in favor of the idea. How we've addressed culture in those half-year courses now has been through the lens of countries who speak the languages we're teaching.
Correct.
Culture, when you just use the word culture, it can have a much broader definition, right? In terms of not just languages, but religions and all kinds of other criteria. So how are we defining culture and what is gonna be included in this? Cause I think it, I don't wanna say it can get controversial, but it can, it can be a very wide net. And how are we gonna cast it? What is it, do you have, like, what is that gonna look like?
So I wish I had a more detailed answer for you, but in the broad sense, we're going to be looking at the what folks celebrate, celebrations. I don't, see, I hesitate to say religion because we're not going to be looking at religion. Because, but we will in a, in a certain aspect, because you have to talk about that, it's part of culture. So I, I, I can't give you, you know, a full, good answer right now on that. We've gotta develop this curriculum this summer. But it's really going to be looking at celebrations, traditions. I, I, you know, I hesitate to say the word food because that's, that's always, people just associate that with culture immediately. It sounds like a really singular-minded view. But it has to be more, but it has to be more than that. I don't want people focusing on that. There's so much, it's a part of it, right?
We want this program to have educational value.
It needs to be robust, right? It needs to be rigorous.
Yeah.
But it's going to incorporate those types of things.
So will they be, will there be more, will we have the opportunity to have more conversation about this this summer to give you input as you're putting together the program? Like, I'm thinking, I mean, I'm guessing you're not gonna have more details by, in a couple of weeks with our next meeting. But as it's pulled together-
We could, we could, because this is, again, these discussions were very new for the teachers who have to be, who have to be creating this. We don't even know if it was going to be accepted. So I know I sound like a politician right now that's pushing this off, but it is, it's too early for us to tell.
A framework or an outline would even be helpful, just to contextualize.
By the, by the summer, not tomorrow.
So that could happen. So there are a couple of things, right? I wanna be clear. We have contractual obligations that, that we need to meet with regard to our teaching staff in terms of any change within what they're teaching. And that's critically important, it's June first. So what we're looking at presenting here is, hey, are you okay with the framework being accepted that we're moving to this model? Do I certainly think that the focal point will be on French and Spanish heritage and language and culture? The answer is yes, because that's what our, that's where our staffing exists. It doesn't mean that's going to be the only thing. And they're not year-long courses.
Sure.
Right? So I think, you know, as we look at the development of the curriculum for that, from that lens.
Right.
And most likely, but you can have a very different, you know, culture in Argentina than you do in Ecuador. And so, or in Spain, or Mexico, right? Or France and Guadalupe. Like, there are so many different ways of looking at the culture that exists within, or Haiti, right? I mean, so my guess is with our staff, as they look through the summer and look to develop the curriculum, they're gonna focus on their skill set as well. And their skill set happens to be in French and in Spanish.
And in the culture pieces that are already taught as part of those half-year classes.
Correct.
But instead of having it be half culture, half language, it'll be the culture piece in sixth grade and the language piece in seventh grade.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, no, Tina, I don't think you can ever teach a language without embedding culture.
True, true.
No matter what, what grade level you're at.
More focus of it, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think you can ever, and again, I'm married to a Spanish teacher.
Right.
Who, who does this, and we talk about this, and culture is, happens to be embedded in everything they do. And every one of our world language teachers does. It's not just the language. It's art, it's music, it's food, it's religion, it's belief systems. That's all embedded. And I think what we're trying to do, at least at the sixth grade levels, is to, to build this appreciation for the diversity of cultures and language. And yes, it will be more focused on the French and the Spanish, because that's what the teachers have for the skill set. And that, and that's for the next year. I don't know what, and I can't pretend to know, what it's going to look like moving forward after next year. Because I really think we need to look at the middle school schedule and make some significant adjustments to it.
Yeah, and that's fair. But I think that, and obviously, once we approve, you know, a change in curriculum, the details of what goes on in the classroom, that moves over to your side of the street. But I guess also, having this responsibility of saying, we are no longer gonna, Ashlyn does no longer do this, and now we're gonna do that, I guess we just wanna make sure that is a fully developed.
Hundred percent.
You know, and I know you want the same things too.
It has to be.
So like, you know, we certainly understand that we're not going to be writing the curriculum for you.
No, no. But, yeah, but it would be helpful as you move forward, obviously, to give us some, some opportunity to share our thoughts on what you're pulling together. I'm in favor of, I think it makes sense to, to focus, it's almost, you know, look, I don't wanna say a slow intro, but it kind of is a slower intro into like a broader look, you know, at the world and helping, you know, one of the things that we wanna help our students be is, you know, more informed citizens, right? And so it's a piece, understanding different cultures is a piece of that.
Exactly.
But like, the definition can be so broad, right? And I know different people are gonna have different opinions on what that includes, and so any-
And I'm guessing it'll morph over time too. Like, if the kids are really responding to like a certain aspect of it, then we have the opportunity to, to develop those parts.
I think there's some flexibility and autonomy that we need to give to our educators, right?
Right.
And to allow them, with their experience and their expertise, to have a voice here, right? And but we, they can't have a voice unless we approve.
Yeah, right, right, right. No, I told, I get it. I understand, yeah.
I mean, that's my only struggle with it, right? Do I think in the summer to present to you, hey, this is where we're headed with this? And then get feedback? Absolutely, because there's still time for these educators to, to do some professional development surrounding this.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd certainly say, I actually really like the idea
Yeah.
of the world cultures program, particularly from the DEI perspective. I think that's, in some ways, if somebody said, you know, go back and you're starting from scratch, what would you wanna do in terms of world language versus the world cultures program? I might choose this, you know? And so I like that development, I like that direction. I, well, I appreciate the practicalities of people sort of going to what they know a little better, knowing what's safe for them, you know, as to what they've known because of what they've been teaching. You know, one of the aspects of our former vision statement, our current one, is global communities, right? And so to me, you know, I think it's really important to push that, right? And to have an appreciation of what Chinese culture or Japanese culture or, you know, Far East Asian, wherever, all around the world. And I think the more we can expose our kids to in terms of different cultures, the better.
I agree.
I would say that, you know, in terms of sort of how I see our role as a school committee and involving it, we do approve curriculum, right? We have to vote on this, or they can't do what they need to do. But I really also do feel strongly that we're approving the sort of programmatic level stuff, and it's up to, not to Dave, but to Aaron and Mike and Jim and those involved, and the staff, to really develop this. And I personally don't, I mean, I'm very interested in the updates and knowing how it's going. But I'm not sure that I feel like the committee should have sort of more, too much more than the level of approval that we're being asked for.
Right, and I'm not thinking level of approval, I'm just sharing with us where you are so that we can share our thoughts with you.
Hundred percent.
We trust you to do your job, that's what you're there to do, and, but just cause-
For me, it wasn't details, it's just more the high level, like if we're placing A with B, have it be, you know, on the same level of expectations of the kids and all that other stuff, which I'm sure you're gonna do anyway, but that's what we're voicing because we're here talking about it.
No, I think it's-
Yeah. But I'd certainly agree with, with the direction and the suggestion and all that.
You good, Marcy, even quiet on this one?
Well, yeah, no, I'm just absorbing. I was thinking too, it's just like a great opportunity to link in with other things that we have, like performance arts and music, and like, maybe there's some, oops, cross pollination. So, you know, as a parent of someone who's going into the sixth grade, I would, you know, I'm very eager to hear how it unfolds, because I'm sure I'll be hearing about that there's a change, right? So it's just good to understand the outline of what you're thinking to respond to people who ask, that's all.
Yep.
Absolutely fair. You will probably get the most questions about that than, than the rest of us, because you're in touch with that.
If you're lucky, right?
I'm separating my parent brain and my student brain.
They, they cross over, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the sixth grade world cultures curriculum as presented.
Second? All in favor? Hi.
Thank you.
Done.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Same car.
And Kelly, yes. He had the ask on this one.
Improvement plan and handbook and all those together.
All the good stuff.
I'll share the screen.
Handbook is first on the agenda, but it doesn't really matter if it's more community.
You wanna go to the handbook first and then go back? It's your call.
No, that's how it is on the agenda, but-
Yeah. No, I understand. Do you want me to just jump right to the handbook?
Where's Mr. Kendall when you need him?
It's really okay. All we have to do is approve to flip the agenda a little bit. Everybody?
Motion to flip the agenda.
Agenda's flipped, Kelly.
So starting with updates of our school improvement plan, what you have there is, the underlying part, there's a link to our improvement plan, I kinda highlighted the things that we worked on this year. If you wanna go in there and read, but so this is just kind of a breakdown. The bolded areas are the action plans. And I kinda just saw on each of them ongoing, I think I have them in the school improvement plan as things that we're working on this year, but all of them are things that we need to continue to work on. In terms of, we spent some time this year looking at certain courses and levels and how we do our recommendation process. I think we have a lot more work to do in that area. But we, you know, all of our departments spent some time really looking into program studies and making sure that they were consistent in how recommendations are made for classes. The math vertical team did some work, and, you know, we are going to be having some students take geometry CP two coming from eighth grade into ninth grade this coming year. So that's a change that has been made, kinda looking at, are we, you know, what are we offering so that students can take classes at the appropriate level, work with them. In terms of continuing to look at alternative needs for our students, and, you know, we continue to see students leaving high school without a diploma this year. So I think in recorded community year, last year we were approved to join the Department of Ed High School Scheduling Co-Part. We were one of the paid schools in the state this year that came together to talk about our schedule specifically. And we went into it thinking we needed to look at a new schedule for the high school and make some changes because of our, our feeling that the location doesn't actually meet all the needs of the students. We got to the end of the year thinking, and we went into it saying we weren't gonna change the schedule for next year. It would be in two years if we did it. I think we have a lot more out of it in terms of looking at some of the programming that we hope to continue to work with DESI on, certainly wanna continue to look at our schedule for a lot of factors that we need to consider for. And an example of that is, you know, we are going to look at the DESI integrated pathways program, which we've talked about a little bit over the past few years. And then with the, with your approval in terms of staffing, we're excited to bring in our Bright Bridge program that we think will help to meet some of the needs of these students. And we can work outside of the schedule, the way that our schedule works, with some of the kids that perhaps aren't, you know, we might wanna be looking at. And we're gonna be building this next year and figuring out the best processes. But, you know, are we gonna have kids that maybe are working full-time during the day? And we'll be willing to do some classes in the evening or after school to meet their graduation requirements. I actually was very excited, we, you know, obviously about the state when students withdraw, to send a letter every year saying, these are, you know, please come in and talk to us about options. And often those letters are ignored, and we did have a young man come in just Monday and, and kinda talked to him about, these are some things that we might be able to offer you next year. And he agreed to come back in September and have some discussions. So we, he's a student that works full-time during the day. So hopefully we can find some things that work for him with this new programming. And then in terms of, again, looking at, you know, what is in our course offerings and, you know, to make sure we have some equitable offerings for all our students that are in our building. We, this is kind of second year in another DESI program called PACE two, which is focused on computer science equity. We started that program with really looking with us, a collaboration between myself, our computer science teachers, and our school counselors. And we started off really looking at male, female equity, which we, as a school, had already been doing for a couple of years when we joined our program. And shifted our focus this year to really, you know, things of our EL students and our newer students, our computer science teachers, that we have mini sessions of the courses they offer in all our EL classes, to give the kids a taste of this is what you can do. And this is a different language too, so don't feel threatened by our courses. It's really a great entry place for you and an opportunity to build some, some real-life skills. So, you know, we're in the process of evaluating whether or not those numbers have increased, whether or not we're gonna see more of our EL students in computer science. So now we're kind of looking at both components, making sure that now it's male, female, but also making sure the population of our school is represented there. We're actually heading to the computer science conference tomorrow, and we'll be presenting our work that we've done there. And obviously, you know, our business programming, those classes were overfull this year.
Awesome.
We could offer ten more sessions and have them fall. We were very excited to bring those into the building, and we'll continue to work on that and other options in coming years. In terms of social emotional learning, I think there's been here before about our involvement with JED program. We have a team that is working with this national program, it's started at the college level, and a lot of their work down in high school. They really come in and help the school create a vision plan, create a strategic plan for how they carry out mental health supports. We felt like we were doing a lot, but really wanted to kind of make sure we had a well-spelled-out plan. And we're kind of doing things manually for out the elements. So we spent some time this year developing a vision plan, and we have spelled out it. And we've done some work around what our goals are for mental health and suicide prevention. When we have different timelines that we're gonna bring, that we're gonna make things happen throughout the year. And we've planned some, some summer work that hopefully we're gonna take some next steps in making sure that we embody some of our safety protocols around when we have, you know, as most students maybe in school around mental health, et cetera. So that's some work that's already happening. We had that part of that plan, we talked about some pre- and post-assessment in terms of where the kids are in the baby around mental health as part of our sense of suicide booster that we do with our seniors every year. That will happen next week. We are going to administer a survey with them to get some feedback on some of the interventions and education that they've had over the last couple of years. And that's part of the work that JED has supported us in. That's a three-year plan, and so next year is our third year working with JED. And then what we will continue to look at our survey data, I know the Metro West full survey comes out next week, seven other months. We were, I just learned yesterday, and we have not met yet, our social norms survey that we administered this year, we are not able to use the data because we've talked a lot about students being surveyed out. And not that we're not taking- Because we've talked a lot about students being surveyed out and not that they're not taking, we only had a forty percent participation rate. So Montana State came back to let decisions that are returned know that the data is not used for any collection. In terms of resource management, as Pete mentioned earlier, we've done, you know, a lot of drilling this year, a lot of conversations around school safety. And adjustments we can make as a school community to keep our building safe. And we, this was our first year of having to manage shared classroom space. And it went, it went well and we've taken some spaces that weren't traditionally classrooms and changed them into classrooms. And it's all gone well so far. And we do anticipate having to kind of go through that process and make some changes this summer. So I'll bring some of the staff members, but you know, it's, we've been able to use the spaces really successfully. We're looking forward to doing more of that. In terms of technology and we looked particularly at AI, that was a big concern with the high school teachers. And you know, the impact that that is having on, you know, what students are doing, especially outside of the classroom. We had a great teacher team that took it out as a goal and did a presentation at our last faculty meeting and we spent the year researching how it can be used effectively in the classroom, shared some incredible resources with the whole staff in terms of how to make themselves more productive, different tools that can support students. And as well as some, you know, ongoing discussions about how do we change what we're doing in the classroom so that you don't have to worry about students using AI too cheap. But if we're allowed to use it appropriately, it's gonna be part of the world. And I already spoke a little bit about the program and I've kind of mentioned a couple of different places about, you know, some things that we change in with making sure that we keep kids in school, get their diplomas. And finally, with curriculum and program, when we started those conversations about our current waiting system and what that means around GPA. I will mention it, you know, in that conversation, one thing that our world language department in particular has been having conversations and has had some PD recently around proficiency-based learning with world language and that gets a bit. And their perspective, we can't be a school that waits. We're gonna go to that model, so that's something they're looking forward to looking at in the future. Kind of a different lens on teaching world languages that really look at the skills that students need to learn rather than, I got a needing in Spanish two, so I'm doing Spanish three. Do you have the skills to move to that next level? Spoke a little bit about examining this.
Can I say a question on that one? So I certainly appreciate the focus on proficiency, right, as being, I mean, that's what we're supposed to be doing, right? It's not just getting a good rate on a test, it's with everything. But how is that necessarily inconsistent potentially with like the weighted or unweighted grading model?
I cannot answer that question, but I'm sure our department is on purpose. We just actually had that conversation a couple of days ago.
Okay.
And it's a different model of how they'd like to teach, that they feel like the, how we level things and how we are really.
Maybe next year I'll still be on that site council and hear about that.
Using those rubrics that we don't use as often to, you know, the one through four scales as opposed to, you know, integrating.
If you can get rid of grading altogether, I'd be happy with that, but that's a whole different story.
Talked about the different opportunities for earning a diploma. You know, we've done some things over the course of the year where our EL and special education staff have shared their expertise within the school community and helped to develop that. Had a lot of discussions about some of the change in population, how we need to use our experts to create, you know, the collaboration and the skills that are needed in the classroom. And I think in terms of vision of the graduate, what I've already said about alternatives is still there. At the community service, it falls under, fell under this action item. We held our ninth and tenth grade community service day back in October that I thought was successful. I think there was mixed reviews. It was definitely a learning experience for how to organize it and what we wanna see happen in the future. I anticipate we'll probably have, we'll be looking at something like that again for this fall with the change. Remember the PSAT change really helped to drive that and really give us some opportunity to do something different with the students on that day.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? I know this, this past year, the whole, I know the students got a survey, like, would you participate, like, what would you wanna part, I don't know, I forget if it was what would you wanna participate in? But or kind of would you do something on your own or participate in something from the school? And I know like, you know, my son, my son in particular, cause I just know what he did. He said he'd participate in something that the school did, so he didn't organize anything outside of school. But then there wasn't something that happened in school. So do you anticipate having opportunities that you help cultivate for the students? And then what about eleventh graders? Cause if it happens to the PSATs, there's no, have you thought about kind of how to address those things? So that community service is still something that, you know, all students are, I know it's not a requirement, so there's not the impetus to kind of push them to do it. But you know, the hope is that we're still giving them the opportunity to, so have, do you?
We don't have anything specific that would stop the activity of graders. I will say we still push out opportunities all the time from the community. That was one of the questions, we wondered how much that would drop off. Our community service advisor feels like she's still getting a lot of community service submitted. We haven't evaluated this year, whether or not, you know, who is the one who goes out and says, look like.
Yeah.
And then of course our twelve graders are still doing their next year. And we have more opportunities than we probably have students for that day, so we're excited about that.
Excellent.
How about that random line here?
Any more question on the plan?
I guess the only one, I just have, Jim, this is a general question, not just a high school one. Typically, we, we get the, the improvement plan for the next year, right? Around this time or over the summer. And I guess my overall sense is to the extent these are all of course tied to the blueprint. And the blueprint is a multi-year. Are we not necessarily doing updated site, site improvement plans, school improvement plans sort of for next school year? Because we're all in these multi-year programs right now? Or will it be sort of modified documents from each school coming forward?
So were they anticipating this in the fall?
Yeah.
We have modified documents, yeah. Yeah, I think we've gotta sit down as a group, so.
I had just asked him the same question.
Yeah, so part of our discussion, we've got a couple of days of summer, there's an admin team to come together and see where we are. I mean, everything's predicated upon obviously the strategic plan. But we wanna go back and look at and make sure that, okay, are there certain areas that Kelly, Pete and Dave really focused on, the equity, the, the resource management, et cetera? What was accomplished, what wasn't accomplished, what do we need to continue to do in those areas and then bring that back? I think we can start the year with that. In, in years past, I think in site councils, we would create a new site, school improvement plan. I don't know if we're doing that specifically anymore as opposed to we have a, you know, that blueprint, if you will, of where we're headed.
I think we're supposed to have one from each school.
Correct. I'm not saying we won't. I'm just saying, what I'm asking the principals to do now is to give you an update on what happened this year.
Yeah, yeah, no, that I understand. I understand that.
But as we get to the fall, we approve the plan for the next year, right? They need time to look at the current plans.
Yeah.
What was accomplished, what wasn't accomplished, look at the actual strategic plan and say, okay, here are the next, here's the next iteration, right?
Yeah, yeah, just a process question.
Our plan was twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-six.
Right.
And I just pulled out the things that were, that we had said they were gonna be a possibility this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly, that helps.
Yeah.
Same. Yeah, I know it's the same, but I still think we should have to bring it back to you.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if we look at the design thing, we don't think it should be very hard. Handbook's gonna be easy. We really have no changes. Well, this part's not gonna be easy, but.
Yeah.
Right.
So coming out of COVID, we knew we were all using, you know, adults and students alike using technology quite a bit more. I think we went from a place of having an expectation of students not having their, using their phones at school. They all have them at school. And I believe that's age appropriate for high school students. I know I don't always have that. And. And teachers, I think, changing their mindset in terms of maybe students need to have more access to technology. You know, we've had conversations about different, you know, different tools that the phone provides for the students, whether it be academic or social emotional, a student that does want to, you know, probably just sit and look at it and communicate with somebody in a different way. Outside of the school, it's a personal, it's a larger student that maybe ones better or helps control their emotions by listening to some music in a different place. So we took the handbook last year and adjusted the language, it's been in there for many years, to give teachers permission to set individual classroom policies around cell phones. But really the rest of the language that was in there did not change. The teachers really said over the course of this year that needs to come out. So that is the language that is coming out, basically that statement that is, that was built into the rest of our policy. You know, our intention is to start the year with a school-wide expectation on every classroom is going to have a place where students are expected to put their phone. At the evening class, if their phone is not anywhere within, you know, what is happening with them academically. You know, many of our teachers already were using the phone holders, the shoe holders and find a great deal of success with that. So I think the adjustment in our language is really about at this school, adults in this school have some inside language. And this is our expectations around the phones. We had a long discussion about it at our last site council meeting. We really kind of just had it down to just take that phone statement out of the policy.
So this is the statement that's coming out of the policy?
Coming out, so the, the policy is in the next, this is the language we have now. Which we got into a little more debate tonight, which I wasn't expecting at site council meeting an hour ago, so.
After I left, I didn't hear it at all.
We had, you know, we added in, you know, we took out IPod.
What's an iPad?
We wanted to make sure students understood X block is an academic time. Again, but we still have that end of that first sentence that says without teacher permission. Because there is a lot of belief on the part of many teachers that there are gonna be times that they say, okay, I'm giving you permission right now for this academic reason or for this downtime reason to take your phone out and use it. And so it does still leave significantly, but this is where our policy has been for many years. Is that cell phones or any devices should not be used during class time, which includes study hall, which includes X block, which includes wellness classes and art classes unless your teacher gives you permission. And like you are allowed to have your phone when you're in between classes, passing and when you're at lunch, et cetera. I am at lunch just about every day, every day. Erin and me are at lunch every day for an hour and a half. I do think there is a perception that kids are sitting in the cafeteria at a table looking at their phones and that does not happen. They are sitting talking to each other. And maybe sometimes they're taking out their phone and saying, look at this, or maybe they're playing a video game together or something, you can, you see it.
Yep.
They are not sitting on their phones just every single time. But I would say the same in Milwaukee, they're having conversations. Either the phone's there and the phones are involved in those little conversations. So we are just, the only change really is just that we as a faculty are working the system and what happens in the classroom.
So will the expectation be that like every class will have like one of those shoe holders and unless the teacher says, you, in my class, you can use it as a calculator, take it out as you need it type of deal?
I don't think we will get to the point that everyone has one of those holders. Our English classes all purchased, I think they're just basically pencil holders that hang up in front of each desk.
Okay, nevermind, yeah.
I think teachers wanted a little more, there is concern on some of our faculty's part that I, I don't want to take the phone away from a student in case.
I have to say, the conversations on this topic were really interesting, particularly hearing from the faculty members who go to the site council and the deans about some of the things that kids do just to have it with them. My, my favorite one was the phone case. They, they have these just extra phone cases. So that when they're supposed to put in the shoe holders, they just put the cone, the case in there, it looks like there's something there. And they've got the other one hidden somewhere. Yeah, burner phone case, really, I mean, just a case. Yeah, it's, I mean, right, it's like, as I always, I've always said to my children, if you can use your powers for goodness instead of evil, right? It was fascinating to hear some of the challenges that they've had.
Well, the challenge will be when the legislature changes and actually rates law into place and approves law into place that cell phones are not allowed in schools. And that's coming. That will be forthcoming.
I'll believe when I see it.
I, I mean, I really do believe it is, it's well into the pipeline.
I was just gonna say, there's lots of conversation about it, yeah.
And we've been asked many times why, you know, there are districts that are using those like bags that you might get when you go to the theater or something. It's, it's a, we've looked at it, it's a very big expense. And just to manage it.
And you know, while I understand the anxiety, I mean, I have it myself, sometimes the anxiety of not having your phone on you because you wanna be accessible or get directions or whatever, you know, some of the elderly people in the room, you know, my whole life I didn't have, you know, we, we made do and we didn't have a phone. People who needed to find us, found us. If we needed directions, we found our way. You know, it's really not, we've developed a reliance on it that, you know, maybe in some situations, it's, it's been life-saving. But in general, you didn't need a phone to get through your life.
Do, do you make them? Oh, I was just gonna ask, do you make them take their watches off? Like, how does that work? Cause that's the, like, I can just hear the, well, I need a watch now.
Yeah.
I've watched that in classes where.
Right.
So yeah, I, I think our teachers that have been consistently using a process where that is their classroom expectation have said. It's not an issue in my class.
Right. Once the kids understand.
Right, they meet the expectation. So this just basically standardizes the expectation.
Right.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we have to approve the handbook, right? For the high school. I'll move to approve the high school handbook as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, school committee summer retreat.
Just an update, we have chosen one specific day that we are planning on meeting and I just wanna confirm.
Thanks, everybody.
Can I everybody, thank you.
That is July twenty-third. It's a Tuesday. Currently at this time, Mark and Lori and I talked a week ago, was it Monday or last week? We're gonna stick with the one date at this point and if we feel like we need to add something later in the summer, we'll check our calendars then. But it's the Warren Conference Center. That's the one day they actually had available. They didn't have the Monday available. So we did have two days back to back that we could have chosen, but Tuesday was the one day that we could actually run.
And we're gonna do our very best to keep it on retreat topics rather than.
Right.
Right, correct.
Should we have like a timer where we each get three minutes when we talk and then we get.
Chess clock, yes.
I told Jim, if I'm, if I'm chair, I'm gonna have to lay down the law a little bit better.
Yeah, I will be late.
We'll bring one.
I just wanted to make sure it's on everybody's radar. Okay, that's awesome. Fair enough. We're good.
Okay, and then next up, your evaluation.
Sure. You should have received a document that I shared with you earlier in the week, just in terms of the evaluation process. And I, I forget the date we put in there, Lori, when you need all the information. I can pull it up here if you want me to.
I can find it.
Summary of evaluation, right here. We said by June fifth to have the documents back to Lori. The evaluation will take place on June twelfth, which is, so it's a, so you had a week before the twelfth. And I will have, I will share with you, and again, this is a challenge for those. And I will have, I will share with you, and again, this is a challenge for those who don't use the Gmail account, the Ashland School Committee Gmail account. I will share a folder with each of you with the evidence as it relates to the four goals. And I typically write a narrative of how I thought the year went and whether or not I feel as though the goals were met. Some goals will have less evidence. I'll give an example, the absentee, chronic absentee goal that we set for the high school, for the reduction in low-income Hispanic and high-need students. Our data just came back from the state. We clearly met all of our goals, which is awesome, but that's really just a small piece of, it's the evidence, right? And what I'll share with you is, oh, by the way, we sent two hundred letters out to students for high-needs, because, you know, or Hispanic, et cetera, over three-quarters of the year.
Right, you took action.
These are the actions we took. It's small evidence, and really it's the data that show that we met the goal. So, right? The bigger piece happens to be the strategic plan, right? We had lots of little goals that we're sharing with you. So if you look at what Kelly and Pete were talking about tonight, it goes back directly to the school improvement plan. So if you have questions on this, I know Tina and I, we sat and talked. If you have questions, you want to come in and have a conversation about, hey, you know, what about this?
Jim's available, I'm available for any part of it. And while a week in advance of our meeting is great, and if everybody just gets it off their plate, fine. If for some reason you can't, it's also fine, as long as it's not like very last minute. Just because it's harder than it seems to create the narrative piece of it. The numbers I can just tell, you know, they are what they are.
Marcy, are you familiar with how the whole thing works?
Yes, I am. And I'm familiar from my work experience as well. So it looks pretty familiar to my past life.
Yeah, so if people need a little extra time, that's fine, as long as I am not doing it on the day of. Plus, I also like to give Jim the benefit of sitting down with me and Mark or one of us so that he knows generally what's coming at the public meeting. And have a chance to give him a heads up, which I can't do if it's not done in time. Generally, there's no issue with this group, but I'm just, because you're new, Marcy, explaining my process. If I at least have a couple or a few days to work on the narrative, then I'm good. If you can get it done sooner, you'll be done and it'll be wonderful for you.
Jim, did you already send us the form?
I did.
You did, okay.
I did. And, yeah, and what I'll do is, like I said, hopefully by Friday, if not by the weekend at the latest, you'll have a shared folder. And again, what I think we have to understand is when we actually meet with our teachers and we evaluate teachers as well as administrators, every single piece of the rubric and indicators and, they're not all going to be focal points, right? It's sort of like the goals that we set meet specific indicators, and that's what I'll highlight, so. So there's a goals component of it, did we meet or not meet the goals? But then there's the four standards.
There's the ratings part of it, so it's, you know, two-part. And certain areas ask for additional comment. In particular, if the rating is going to be higher than proficient or lower than proficient, some explanation is required on the Massachusetts State Form.
And again, I.
Just for Marcy's benefit. It sounds like you've done this before.
Yeah, and I just, I typically try to be reflective of how I think the year went. It's not just the stuff that's happening within the goals, but, and we've had these conversations, right? I mean, we opened a new building this year, and it's not part of the goals, it's part of my job, right? But it was pretty significant, you know, the things that we did. But so we're just focused on four little components of it, if you will, or not little, but four components of it.
Right, it doesn't, it doesn't cover everything that is.
That's why I'm always open, if you want to have conversations.
Okay, good. Do you have anything to add on by way of update, superintendent's update?
We'll go to Mike first.
Mike first, yeah.
I'll try to be short, but I have a little bit more than usual today. We did have a professional development day on Friday, really excited about the work that was done. Our ESPs all met with our special education team chairs, and they introduced them to the concept of the new IEP. And I think it's good for everybody to be aware of that. We're gonna be doing a lot of work with the new IEP with all of our educated, our general educators, special educators and teaching staff in the fall. But we had other plans for our, our teaching staff, so we decided this would be a good time to at least introduce the concept to our ESPs, so they're aware of it. All of our teaching staff, every, every person in Mendez, Ashland Middle School and Ashland High School was introduced to the Open Architects Dashboard Platform. It was finally our official teacher rollout for that dashboard. Now, all of our staff have access to three specific dashboards. One is called My Student Explorer, which you have not really seen, but that's the one that collects all of our student data in one comprehensive view, so you can view any student. But what they were able to do for us is our teachers can see their specific students. So they've broken it down using our iPass tech, our iPass technology and to utilize the schedules that we have, so they are able to see the students that are in front of them on a daily basis. And they can break them down by demographics, by all the different data that we have. They also have the student attendance, which is great, and they can see combined assessments, which is the one that I showed you folks, which is where we house all of the different summative informative assessment data that we provide. And what really came of that meeting was some fantastic feedback, particularly from our high school teachers, who said, we need more data on here. Specifically, can we get, just, you know, as a small example, can we get our AP data on this? So now I'm working with the folks to improve that dashboard, to make it even more impactful for our high school folks. So I'm excited about what was done. I'm not sure if it was the most exciting thing for our staff to take part in, but I did get some positive feedback of, well, this is, this is going to be really good for us. It wasn't, you know, the most enjoyable.
Yeah, they're gonna, some people are tracked the data. You got a bunch of them sitting at the table here, and then others who are kind of like.
But I think they're going to dive in and see, and see that it is, is going to ultimately really help us. And, you know, just alone talking about the fact that we've made our goal for chronic absenteeism. I mean, I love the fact that I look on, I see Jim's looking at it every day to be able to track that. And no, we knew that we passed our goal before the state came out and did it, because we can track it throughout, throughout the entire year.
And I will say, I mean, Open Architects was great, because there were pieces of data that I was like, like, how do we like get the low-income or the Hispanic students? Because that was really our goal, right? And so they were really receptive and responsive to, hey, we're gonna add this in as a category, so you can actually grab it, the data, which is great.
Sum of evaluations for all of our teachers who are on year two of a two-year plan, as well as all of our teachers who are on one-year plan, which is our teachers who are non-professional status. All of those evaluations were completed and delivered to the staff members. Principals and other evaluators are currently working on our formative evaluations for folks who are on year one of a two-year professional learning plan. Those will be due on June first. We did have, I'm not sure if I talked to you about our third and final collaboration of administrators, where we did our last walkthrough. I just wanted to let you know that that's part of our goal process. We did our third one, and it was great, because our focus throughout the year really ended up turning into a calibration to ensure that we're all utilizing student impact statements. And that's where we kind of ended up landing. You know, we started this with the idea of calibrating, but then we had a really broad approach, and we ended up focusing there. And, you know, as I review some of these evaluations, it's wonderful to see that every, you know, I was so far, you know, ninety-five percent of our commendations and recommendations are including these student impact statements that really are the most important thing when you're providing feedback to our teaching staff. And finally, I thought that last year we were gonna set the record, but this year we have even more. We have forty, forty summer curriculum proposals for me to review for our staff. I had a feeling there'd be a little bit more, because the price went up a little bit on, on, on the, on the hourly wage. But it's exciting.
There's evidence that changing those numbers sometimes has a result.
But it's exciting to see some of the work that folks want done. We are in the early phase right now of prioritizing those lists and seeing what actually needs to be done. You know, there are things that are going to take a higher priority than others. For instance, the world cultures curriculum is going to be the top priority. There's going to be some other work that's gonna be done at the middle school that's directly related to the schedule and some things that we have to incorporate that will take some precedence. But, you know, I was really excited to see a variety of different proposals. We've got some world history, we've had ELA at every single level. Sarah and her staff wanted to do some significant work at Pittaway. So there are a number of things. It's gonna be a long, a long meeting when we meet with all the principals to sit and prioritize. And I plan on beginning that process early on Monday. I'll meet with every principal to say, you need to prioritize with, with me the proposals that came from your building. And then we'll get together as a group and we'll, and we'll kind of fight it through, because there is a finite, you know, amount of money.
How many, do you know how many you can fund, or does it depend on the hours? Does each one take a different amount of hours?
Yeah, each one takes a different amount. So, you know, they, giving you the range, the proposal that asked for the most was just over fifty-two hundred dollars. The proposal that asked for the least was about two hundred something. So it's a huge, it's a huge range. And what we do try to do is, we try not to say no, but we try to say, yes, you could have a portion of it. But with that many, this year we could, we may have to deny some or push some off and make it possible for folks to have some professional development time during the school year to do some of this work.
What do we budget for that type of work?
It's, it depends on how much I have left after the, after the grant cycle. So it's part of the PD budget. So right now, it's, we should be able to fund the majority of it, but it's part of the PD budget. So we do have a, we do have a good amount left, because I was fairly, I was fairly conservative this year. So I think we should be okay.
Just a few things. One, I want Chris just to mention his new role at the state level.
I recently joined the board of directors for Masbo.
Congratulations, Chris.
Excellent, congratulations, Chris.
It's been a wonderful professional experience for him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He talked to me probably a month, even a little more than that ago, about the opportunity to join the board, which I think, you know, any, you know, opportunity to be a part of a professional organization which relates directly to your job is critically important.
It's a great recognition. I mean, you get on that because your colleagues think you're worthy of being leader in the organization. Congratulations.
Well done, Chris.
Yeah, it's great. So a few things. One, we're certainly well into the hiring process for next year for faculty and staff. We're continually tracking that. As you know, as part of the budget cycle, we, you know, budget with anticipation of savings. So I'll go on record and say, Mr. Regan's one of my favorite people right now. And we'll leave it at that. He's, he's doing a really great job of hiring and the, I encourage principals to be done the process by the end of June, so we don't have to worry about it over the summer. Inevitably, we'll get some folks in the summer who move on, decide to retire, whatever it might be. So we've been working diligently with the custodial and maintenance negotiations. So Chris, Mike, John, Murray, myself and their board. I hope if all goes well, we can have something to you for the June twelfth meeting. That's the goal, anyway.
You know, Jim, that just reminded me that there's a part of, we ratified. Is that on your list of things to report out?
It wasn't, I figured you can.
Well, it's your report, so if you want to report out.
That we ratified four of the contracts. So the teachers, the ESPs, education support personnel, nurses and administrative assistants, all those contracts, were ratified by their respective bargaining units. And at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, the school committee did approve those contracts as ratified by the union. And we do have portions of that up on the website already in terms of the salary scales, because we have found it helpful when interviewing folks who ask us, you know, what, what does it look like? And I can certainly tell you, we've had some hires, new hires that looked at our salary scale and were impressed with it, and therefore chose us because of the way we structured that we would hire at the second step immediately. So that it's been very positive. Yeah, no, it's, 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 it's good. And I think the last thing is, when we talk about retreats, Mike and I have had conversations to really onboard our admin team this summer with a lot of different components to where we're headed as a district. I mean, we might be talking about world language, but from a budgetary standpoint, we've got Erin LaChapelle coming on board as the new principal of the middle school, and what are the, you know, ways we can support her? You know, yeah, the new building at Mendez is open, but what's, now what's next for that building? In terms of, okay, let's not focus on the building itself, but Jenna, what do you need to move that forward, the building forward? So that's in, we originally said July, but it looks like we could probably do two days in August now that are set aside specifically, just like we might do for a retreat for the school committee. So that's exciting. Other than that, I think that's all I had. Graduation's coming up. It's our first Friday graduation in Ashland history, high school history. It's the seventh.
Did you miss that one?
Oh, it's coming out. You will also be getting on June twelfth, that's the night we'll be recognizing our retirees. Typically, we do some punch and cake downstairs.
I have that on my calendar for today, and showed up at five-thirty to find out there was.
Yeah, no, it's June twelfth downstairs. Gretchen will be sending out an invitation to folks and ordering up the trays, if you will, that we typically present to those folks. We do two, we do have two retirees at the beginning of next year, so October, November. Like Dave is one of them. I've invited them to be a part of the conversation, so they don't have to come back next year. And go from there. I think that might be all I have for you.
Good, thanks. And without Paul, we're not gonna do warrant approvals. Do you have gifts and donations?
I do. Ohio pile prints, two dollars and seven cents for gifts and donations miscellaneous. Local area Girl Scout troop, three hundred dollars for a picnic table. At the Warren School, it's awesome. Mike and I saw, we go visit the schools, we're like, oh, wait a minute, there's a picnic table out there. And we saw, actually, probably on Friday, the nutrition services staff was out there having their lunch. At the picnic table was a beautiful day, and they were like, oh, this is awesome.
Which school is that at?
Warren, yeah.
It was done, I believe, by a group of sixth graders. Because as I started, I recognized all the names, I said, I know these names.
That's awesome.
Ashland PTO donated four thousand dollars for the David Mendez grade five field trip. And various vendors and supporters, four hundred and sixty dollars for gift cards for the ultimate frisbee, ultimate jeopardy activity. So for four thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and seven cents.
Move to approve the gifts and donations as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it. That's all I have for you.
Okay, minutes from the twenty-fourth. Anybody have anything? Motion to approve the minutes on the twenty-fourth, April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Member updates. Marcy?
I don't have any.
That's okay.
That's okay. Last week, there was an Ash Pack meeting that I was able to attend, and it was always a good discussion. There was a tough, there wasn't as many parents there this week. I think it was just a tough week last week for, for parents. They were actually supposed to, in the second half of the meeting, they have like their executive meeting, basically when Brittany and I leave, and they were gonna have their elections, but there weren't enough people there, so they decided to, to move it until their next meeting. But, you know, the, the questions I was asked, you know, were about the budget and where did things stand. And so they had previously, you know, we had, Brittany and I both previously shared an update, let them know that it passed as presented, so we were good to go. They were also, you know, happy to hear that, you know, the, the teacher and ESP contracts were approved, which, you know, something that they had advocated for was an increase in pay specifically for ESPs. You know, I think. You know, with, I think, they have, many of those parents have felt the challenges with staffing and ESPs. So they were happy to hear that they move forward. That's always a productive discussion.
Good. I'll just share that we had site council at high school earlier today. Conversation that I left early because I thought we had our entire reception here. But they had our athletic director come in and talk to parents in particular, but, but everybody about some of the things that they had questions about. So Kevin was with us for an hour and fifteen minutes. And the one thing I guess I would share as a takeaway for, for this group is the concerns about space, the concerns about, so a number of things that we've already talked about. I mean, the, the battle between town organizations, school organizations, control over the fields, the maintenance of the fields and condition of the fields were all themes that, that got a lot of discussion. There were a lot of questions around that. And I will say, I thought Kevin did a phenomenal job talking about those issues and those challenges. And I was able to provide a little bit more history than, than he had, of course, because it's been going on for forever. But just, you know, wanted to voice that concern, you know, is, is clearly one that was prevalent for people who had kids who have participated in athletic programs. And I commend Kevin also for sort of freely acknowledging sort of the, the things he might have done different in terms of field maintenance and dedication repairs. I think, you know, he really just presented himself very well in terms of that, that forum and showing leadership in, in how he wants to move things forward. But resources and resource condition, I think, is a significant issue. And not that we don't know that already, but that was, that was what we ended up talking about for an hour and fifteen minutes today. Among, among other things really, athletics, but, but that was the, the biggest one.
Excellent. Since I've seen you last, I have been to the Warren Site Council and I participated in the Driscoll Scholarship Selection. So that's all, all I have. And then I, I did, and I, and Mark too, you can weigh in. Want to say a few things about action items because it's always on our agenda. Mark and I talked a little bit with Jim at our last agenda planning about trying to, you know, maybe be more forward-thinking about some topics that we can bring forward or maybe even in the way that we organize our agenda. And just a reminder to everybody that anybody can bring an action item forward, either at the meeting during this period of time or you can email me or Mark, you know, outside of this meeting saying like, I'd really like to explore X. And I'll even say, you know, before we even got to this part in the agenda, at one point during the meeting, I was looking over at Chris. I'm like, poor Chris has to sit through these meetings. He never has to like say a word. It must be miserable. Unless we have like a financial, I'm sorry that you have to put up with this. But, but you remember like back in the day, Barbara would do like the quarterly reports and stuff like that, you know? So I don't know if there's like just anything along those lines that we want to hear more about. Like obviously, we know you're taking care of business or whatever, but we don't have to wait until we're voting on the budget to do like a deeper dive into something. So just all of us, I mean, even Chris, if you could have something that you think would be of interest or if, and we'll do a lot of this brainstorming at the summer session. But just, you know, thinking out of the box about something, there's some things that go on, like every September, we're going to deal with X. Every May and June, we're going to deal with, you know, site council reports and, and there's a bunch of things that happen in between that just have to happen when they happen. But just falling into, into a pattern of that without, you know, just for all of us to be thinking about, what could we do?
Yeah. What I, what I shared with Lori on this when we talked about it was, certainly when, when I first came to the school committee, it felt like every meeting there were a list of seven action items that we were, that were coming up. And it wasn't necessarily for the next agenda, but it was, these are things that at some point during the year, we wanted to make sure we put in and we kind of started with, all right, that's a February issue, this is a December issue, what have you. One of the things I've been thinking about just generally, and it's kind of interesting to know the lawyers thinking about similar type issues, was one of my fears is that I think generally speaking, we feel like we do a decent job as a school committee, as administration and, and the district's going in the right direction and, and doing well. I always worry about being self-complacent with that stuff and, and sort of how do you make sure that you're, you're not, that you're looking at things accurately. And so one of the things that I'd love to find some time for myself to do is, is just poke around at agendas from other school committees, see what kind of things we're talking about, you know, what, what kind of things that, that might say, geez, you know, they're doing something really interesting in Medway. And, and things that we can bring back and, you know, maybe they're right for us, maybe they're not. But so that was kind of part of the, the discussion that we had was trying to think about those things that, you know, maybe slipped through the cracks of our blueprint, things that aren't really strategic at that level, but might be things that are worth a conversation or an action item. So, you know, I think certainly we were thinking about that as maybe something we talk about in more detail at the, at the retreat. But I just wanted to offer that context.
No, what I think, I think you all see more of next year is policies coming forward. Like we, you know, Paul had the building and we had some stuff going on this year. But, you know, generally, there's a couple of policies up for review or reconsideration or something. So I think we need to get better about just making sure our policies are what we want them to be and up to date. And, you know, that's a job of this policy subcommittee to bring them forward, but we need to, we need to, in fact, to do that instead of just responding when a situation comes up. So that sort of thing. Yeah. So that's what we have to say about action items. I think, I think what started to happen from my memory is like we would have this list of things, which most ended up being summer topics. So we would read the whole list and we'd be like, that's for summer, that's for summer, that's for summer, right? And so I think we stopped putting the items on the list. But at, at the same time, I think it's a reminder to, to just, don't let something fall off.
I think there were some of those, there were also things that we, we really all, because there's been so much stability in this committee for the most part, we felt confident they were known, like Jim's evaluation, I think, might have been something that went on there. Oh, like in December, somebody said, well, when do we do Jim's, you know, mid-year evaluation? Which, by the way, we screwed up and didn't do this year. So maybe there was something should have been an action item, right? But there was, there was some of that stuff, the other example you used about looking for quarterly financial reports. I was at a point that Erin had brought, pointed one, went forward at one point to say like, you know, just being responsible as, as fiscal agent for the schools, getting an update on a quarterly basis, how we're doing against budget, where the problem areas, things like that. And so some of that fell into a good routine and then sometimes you lose that with changes and things. So, so we're just trying to be, as I think Lori said, right, you know, more forward-thinking and, and moving things forward rather than having them come to us first. Yeah.
Yeah.
So give that some thought and, and.
Is this a topic for the summer, to talk through some of this?
Of course it is.
We will talk, yeah. And also just to let you know that it's not necessarily like a Lori, Mark and Jim thing, like anything that's important to you. It's fair enough for you to say like, we haven't really taken a deep dive into X, like would you be willing to put that on an agenda? You know, it's, it's a group effort. And I'm not saying, I'm not giving anybody homework. The point is just to let you know that you're welcome to bring your interests forward. And, you know, certainly if, if it's appropriate, and it probably will be if you're bringing it forward, we'll have a discussion about.
Yeah, it used to be a, a thing we used a lot to sort of think about the agenda, not only in a moment, but breaking agendas out over multiple meetings, saying, okay, we don't want to have all of this stuff on one meeting. What's the priority? You know, those kind of things, so.
Right.
Just a good communication tool.
Yeah, and I don't know if Gretchen has it. I had a calendar at one point.
She's got the list.
Does she got the list? Yeah, Karen had, I had a calendar of topics that should happen, month per month. But that's kind of the, the have-to.
Yep.
But then there's also the like, where, you know, where can we be creative? So, yeah. So that's, that's all I have. If we have a motion to adjourn, I think we're done.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're off, we're out. Good night, everybody.
Jumped on that one.